We will now call a common council meeting of January 19th to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kerkowski is excused. Alderman Lorik?
Here.
Dukenyak?
Here.
Toman?
Here.
Gail?
Can you hear? Can you? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay.
Out everybody. Will everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Andrew, you want to start us? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just as well.
Before we do the minutes of December 15th, 2020, Catherine, would you please read in the notice of video conferencing?
Certainly. The city of Oak Creek is authorized to hold this public meeting remotely during the COVID-19 public health emergency. This meeting being conducted via Zoom video conference with telephone conferencing capability was duly noticed per the City of Oak Creek municipal code and statutory notice requirements more than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Members of the public have been advised of the options for participation. This meeting may also be viewed at the city's YouTube page, the link for which was contained in the notice methods. The meeting recording will be accessible on the city's YouTube page within 48 hours. When unmuted, all participants must state their name and address for the record, then proceed with comments or questions. Questions and comments may also be entered into the Q and A function within the Zoom webinar control panel. Staff and/or the moderator will monitor this function during the meeting and provide the information requested. There is one or more public hearings scheduled as part of this meeting. After the mayor announces a public hearing, staff will read the public hearing notice into the record, state that the hearing is open and subject to the meeting procedure, and provide a brief overview of the proposal. The chair will then proceed with the hearing by making calls for public comment. Following the third call for public comment, the chair will close the public hearing and proceed to consideration of the remaining agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. That'll get us to approval of the minutes of way back from 12:15, 2020. Everybody take a look. When you're satisfied there's no errors, omissions, questions, corrections, we'll entertain a motion. Park moves to approve the minutes of 12:15, 20.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
And item four is recognition of one of our retiring firefighters, Mike Worgelot. Catherine, would you please read Mike's resolution into the record, please?
Certainly. Resolution of commendation to Michael J. Worgelot. Whereas Michael J. Worgelot was appointed to a firefighter on September 25th, 1989, and whereas Michael J. Worgelot retired from his position as firefighter effective December 31st, 2020, after 31 years and three months of dedicated full-time service to the City of Oak Creek Fire Department. And whereas during his years of service, Michael J. Worgelot was, has performed his duties admirably, looking out for his health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Michael J. Worgelot responded to many major alarms, utilizing his skills in firefighting and rescue with dedication and without hesitation. And whereas Michael J. Worgelot conducted many tours and participated in fire prevention activities for the children of Oak Creek during his career. And whereas Michael J. Worgelot has been an emergency medical technician in the state of Wisconsin, later becoming a firefighter paramedic, and during his career has cared for thousands of citizens who were sick or injured, always delivering caring and skilled emergency care to them. Whereas Michael J. Worgelot was a founding member of the Tactical Emergency Medical Services team and has led the team to provide medical support to police officers, citizens, victims, and/or suspects who are injured and are positioned in an area that hasn't been completely secured. And whereas Michael J. Worgelot worked in the Inspection Bureau as a fire inspector, serving a total of two years where his dedicated work helped keep businesses, its occupants, and other contacts safe from fire. And now therefore be it resolved that the city's best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Michael J. Worgelot and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Michael J. Worgelot, passed and adopted this 19th day of January, 2021.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
We have Chief Kresic with us. Would you like to say a few words about Michael?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mike Kresic representing the Fire Department. Regarding firefighter Michael Worgelot. Mike has had the opportunity to serve in many capacities with our organization as the resolution has stated. A couple of that really highlight his talents and his dedication to the department. He served as an acting officer. He has served as our longest active paramedic with the organization, functioning as a paramedic up until his retirement. He has served as fire inspector previously and really during Mike's tenure as fire inspector in our organization, that really was the transitioning point for our inspection program to a community-driven educational-type program. It goes without saying that the relationships Mike developed through the community and the businesses still carry on to this day. So he really was on the leading edge of transforming our inspection program. And without a doubt, Mike's dedication to the Thames program, serving as a founding member, helping push that program forward, serving as a team leader with that group. The efforts he has undertaken to develop interest within our department to continue the program, that really has been a passion of Mike and he's done an outstanding job. And I think when you look at that Thames program in collaboration with the Police Department, that is a regionally known program. And many kudos to Mike for his dedication and service in progressing with that. I've known Mike on a personal level for a long time. So I can attest to the quality individually is. He's made a difference in our organization. He, his dedication to the community, his dedication to the department was unmatched and he will be missed. Best wishes to Mike and his family as he starts this next chapter.
Counsel, would anybody like to say anything on Mike's behalf? Yeah, Chief, it's tough to follow you up with that. But again, I've known Mike for a number of years and Mike's the epitome of what our department is. He's a dedicated individual. He serves the community. No matter who it is, where it is, he's out there doing it. You brought up the Thames team. Very necessary thing these days. Years ago, we didn't quite think about that. But situations that happened within the city really brought it front and forward. And Mike really helped spearhead that along with Police Department. Our thanks to him. His fingerprints are all over the city and won't soon be forgotten. So I'm going to wish Mike and his family a long, happy, well-earned retirement. So, thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate it. Motion, please.
Gail will move to approve resolution number 12212-011921, a resolution of commendation to Michael J. Worgelot, retiring firefighter.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
And item five is also a resolution, commendation to David Rec, retiring firefighter. Catherine, if you would, please read David's resolution.
Certainly. Resolution of commendation to David A. Rec. Whereas David A. Rec was appointed a firefighter on August 23rd, 1999, and whereas David A. Rec retired from his position as firefighter effective December 31st, 2020, after 21 years and four months of dedicated full-time service to the City of Oak Creek Fire Department. And whereas during his years of service, David A. Rec has performed his duties admirably, looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas David A. Rec responded to many major alarms, utilizing his skills in firefighting and rescue with dedication and without hesitation. And whereas David A. Rec has been an emergency medical technician in the state of Wisconsin, later becoming a firefighter paramedic and during his career has cared for thousands of citizens who were sick or injured, always delivering caring and skilled emergency care to them. Whereas David A. Rec conducted many tours and participated in fire prevention activities for the children of Oak Creek during his career. And whereas David A. Rec had responsibility for the inventory and ordering of station supplies. And now therefore be it resolved that the city's best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to David A. Rec and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to David A. Rec, passed and adopted this 19th day of January, 2021.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Chief, once again, I'll give you the floor.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So, you know, sometimes I think there are those front-facing individuals that really maybe are more well-known or maybe better known by some of the members of the community. But it's those that function so well in the background that you don't really realize their impact till they're gone. And David Recy was one of those individuals. I had a chance to serve with David Recy when I was a lieutenant. Certainly got to see him as he progressed through his career. Dave was an individual that during the latter part of his career, you know, certainly he saw the opportunity to mentor our newer employee. And the value in that, in teaching them how we do things in Creek, the care we provide to our citizens was invaluable. And Dave did an outstanding job providing that and mentoring our younger individuals. Dave had an incredible bedside manner. I got to witness that firsthand working with him. I learned from him. The empathy he could show to our citizens and visitors during really bad events, how he could relate to them, how he could reassure them. That can't be taught. That's something that was just Dave. And that's how he related to people. You know, those are the soft skills that are so valuable in our organization and they're missed when they're gone. We hope people pick up those tips from Dave as he passes through our departments and others carry that mantle. So again, I wish Dave and his family the very best as they begin the next chapter.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody like to say anything on Dave's behalf?
Mr. Mayor, can I? This is Chief Anderson. Can I say one thing?
Please.
And actually, it kind of goes for both of these firefighters. It may not be normal to hear from the police chief. But both of these firefighters have had integral impact on our organization as well. You heard Mike Worgelot and his impact on our Thames team. He was a part of our department in that role. Went out on calls with us, on warrants with us. I've known both of these firefighters my entire career, working with them. And David Recy was an individual that when we had something happen to our employees here, when Chief Kresic's talking about the empathy shown and the working together, he was one of the first firefighters and he always reached out. We had a good friendship. He reached out to me, always with the concerns for our employees. So I just wanted to weigh in and they're going to be missed by our organization as well. And they contributed a lot to the Police Department. So I just wanted to.
Thank you, Chief. There's not much more I can add. When two chiefs kind of give you those kind of accolades, it kind of says it all. There's not a lot I can put to it. Again, Dave was part of the culture of the Oak Creek Fire Department. And, you know, even that culture went all the way to our Police Department in partnerships. And really, that's what Oak Creek's about. It's about serving citizens. The chief said he was at the forefront of it. So Chief, you're losing like 52 years, half a century worth of experience here. Those are some pretty big shoes to fill between these two men.
Absolutely. And we look back at 2020, you're talking probably closer to 100 years with the retirements through that timeframe. You know, certainly it's always tough when you lose the experience. But I know the lessons have been passed on to employees. They're very talented and they'll carry the mantle well.
Again, on behalf of the entire common council and myself, I want to wish Dave and his family a long and happy, well-deserved retirement. So with that, motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail will move to approve resolution 12213-011921, a resolution of commendation of David R. Recy, retiring firefighter.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Aye.
Toman?
Aye.
Kerkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
And item six is an introduction. So with that, I will turn it over to the city administrator, Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor. 2020 was a year where I think a lot of us were really searching for silver linings. And at the very last part of the year, actually the week before Christmas, the Christmas holiday, we were involved with final recruitments for two very critical positions in the city of Oak Creek. One was the Tourism and Business Relations Manager. And Laura, I know Mike and Alderman Kerkowski and Alderman Toman did not get to meet Laura before the meeting, but Laura's behind me and she's already jumped into that role and just wanted to come down and introduce herself to you and see what the council was all about on our longest agenda of the year, hopefully. The first and longest. But the other really critical position we were filling was our Assistant City Administrator Comptroller position. Very high-level position with a lot of responsibility in our organization. And again, just before the end of 2020, right before the holiday, there was, just for me personally, such a renewed sense of excitement and anticipation for adding this new talent to our city organization. So before I turn it over to Max to introduce himself to the council, I just want to say that the city management, city administrators, village managers, village administrators in this state are a very tight-knit cohort group. There's probably only 160, 180 or so that exist in our organization. And, you know, I've watched Max grow in his positions in the city of Janesville and really, sitting on the sidelines, you could just tell that Max is an extraordinary talent in city management field. And for us to land not only Laura, but Max, right at the end of the year, just brought a lot of excitement for us in the City of Oak Creek organization in 2021. So if it pleases the mayor, I know, before I turn it over to Max, I should say that we had a really comprehensive recruitment process for this position. We utilized GovHR and outside consulting firm to get us really quality slate of candidates for that position. And we had a pretty rigorous process at the end of last year. And there were three groups of people that met. The direct reports to this position, the extended reports to this position, and then an executive team that was comprised of Melissa, Mayor Dan, myself, Ken Gail, management intern Josh Elaine. Am I forgetting one? That was it? Okay. And independently, we all came back with our preferred candidate that we were most excited about in Max Gaggen. So we're just really thrilled to invite Max onto our team. So if it pleases you, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to Max here for just a brief intro. And I know I forwarded you Max's background a little bit earlier last week. But take it away, Max.
Thank you, Andrew, Mayor in common council. My name is Max Gaggen, the new Assistant City Administrator and Comptroller for Oak Creek. I am very excited for the opportunity to serve the Oak Creek community. I really have two passions in the local government profession, and that's city management and public finance. And to be able to find an opportunity to pursue both of those passions, I'm just over the hill. For my background, I do have a master's in public administration from Northern Illinois University and have worked 12 years in the field, both in city management as well as public finance. I've spent about six years in the city management field, working my way up to the assistant to the city manager for Janesville. And then the last three and a half years, I've served as the finance director for the city of Janesville. I feel like working both in a city manager's office as well as leading a finance office are both skill sets that will suit me well as I serve Oak Creek for the years to come.
Great, thank you, Max. Anybody have any questions on Max? Anything to say?
Oh, just welcome aboard.
Mike? Steve? Anybody out there in Zoom land? Nothing? Okay, well, Max, I haven't had officially called you to welcome you aboard, but welcome aboard. I think you're really going to enjoy it here. Andrew's a great person to work with. You're going to find everybody in Oak Creek's really pretty easy to work with, with a common goal of what we're trying to accomplish. I think you're really going to enjoy it. I think you're going to grow here exponentially. I think it's going to be a great experience, not only for you, but the city. So thank you for accepting a position, if nobody's said that to you.
You guys still have to confirm him. But we're all being a little presumptuous with that. But as the addended agenda does state, we do need the council to confirm the mayor's appointment here. As this is the position that holds the illustrious title as comptroller as well, so.
Yeah. Yep, go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And Max and Laura, just on behalf of the common council, I was happy to be part of the executive interview team and very pleased with the efforts that you and Max expended your experience for both of you folks, really serves you very well, will serve the community very well, in my opinion. Very strong credentials, both of you. And I think the city is going to be much better off as we move forward and get you folks involved in the organization and involve the community. So good luck, welcome aboard and happy to have you.
And I know we don't have Laura on the agenda, so we can't really have her speak or introduce her, can we?
And that'd be the tourism commission appointing anyway, so.
Is it up? Okay.
Yep.
All right. Well, let's move on to item 35 in the addendum. And that is the motion to appoint Max officially. Assistant City Administrator Comptroller. So if we get a motion on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Or 35? I don't know how you'll number that in the minutes there.
Yeah, I got it too.
Go ahead, Ken.
All right, good. Melissa, we're good on 35, right?
Yes.
All right. Gail, I move then to concur with the mayor's appointment of Maxwell Gaggen as Assistant City Administrator/Comptroller.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman?
On, Mike?
There you go. Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can.
Okay.
Alderman Kerkowski?
Aye.
Lorik?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Welcome, Max.
Welcome.
Looking forward to the eighth. The work's stacking up.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to the eighth as well.
Now that he's in. That'll get us to our few public hearings we have tonight. The first is item seven. It's consideration of a request by Samuel Dickman of the Dickman Company for a conditional use permit to allow for a freight yard, terminal, trans, shipping depot on the property at 10300 South Oakview Parkway. Doug?
Mayor?
I am.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Catherine. I'm out of practice. It's been about a month. Please read that into the record.
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Samuel D. Dickman, the Dickman Company, Inc., for the conditional use permit to allow freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot facilities on the property at 10303 South Oakview Parkway. Applicant is Samuel D. Dickman, the Dickman Company, Inc., property owner, West Park LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is December 14th, 2020.
Thank you, Catherine. Now, Doug.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and common council. I am Doug Seymour. I am the Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek. And this is the first of four public hearings this evening. This is on a requested conditional use permit for a freight yard, freight terminal, or transshipment depot facilities for the property at 10303 South Oakview Parkway. Now, the proposal is for users to locate it within a roughly 157,000 square foot multi-tenant industrial building at that address. And just for the council's information, the actual site and building plans and landscaping plans, lighting plans, those actually were approved by the planning commission late last year. The only question was whether or not these types of users would be allowed to lease that space for those types of purposes that require the conditional use permit. So there are no specific tenants as of yet, but this would allow for up to four tenants for warehouse, light assembly, and distribution uses. And that's really what the subject of tonight's hearing is regarding those distribution uses more akin to things that require a heavier amount of trucking. Excuse me. In the Oakview business park, there are a number of conditional use permits outstanding for very similar types of uses. And when the park was first created, it was created as a business park. And we did a traffic impact analysis that kind of judges the improvements that were necessary based on the anticipated traffic from the businesses within that park. And that TIAA came back and made some assumptions about the amount of distribution uses, basically the things that require conditional use permits for the entire park. And it didn't, obviously it was not envisioned that the entire park would be a logistics park, but more light manufacturing, manufacturing, which, you know, certainly all of these uses require trucks. And the principal difference in my mind, and I've shared this with a lot of you, is that, I mean, they're, all trucks, all businesses use trucks. But there's a difference when trucking is the actual business. And I think that's the distinction that we're looking at when we review these plans for businesses from the Oakview business park. So that TIAA essentially came up with a number that, of square feet, that was essentially geared toward or devoted towards distribution type uses. And as we've issued these conditional use permits, that number is quickly being eaten up by the square footage that we've already approved. And in fact, with this conditional use permit request, that number would actually just be very slightly exceeded. So with that in mind, as we review this conditional use permit, it should be with the knowledge and the backdrop that if there are other like conditional use permit requests for the vacant lots, and there's not many in the Oakview business park, that the city may require a kind of amendment or a review of the TIAA to make sure that the assumptions and the infrastructure and the improvements that were made are consistent with the type of traffic that we're seeing coming out of the business park. So that's just a bit of background. But as far as the, sorry, I should advance this before. As far as the proposal itself, I mean, these were the plans that were, again, already approved by the planning commission for the site and building and the landscaping. I think lighting is going to come back a later date. But just from staff's perspective, the applicant was very responsive to not only staff, but a lot of the residents that had participated in the planning commission meeting for the recommendation of the conditional use as well as the site plan in terms of things like burn heights, landscaping, building orientation, a number of different factors. So from that perspective, I think we're pleased with the outcome in terms of the site plan. It was just a matter of getting the planning commissions and the public's input about the proposed use of the potential use, again, for that kind of that distribution user. What you see, again, is the site plan that was approved. You see the building renderings, and I just chose two of them. Nice-looking building, something that worked with very well. As with all of our businesses in the Oakview business park, what traffic, it has been a concern. We put in language there, again, reiterating that West Oakwood Road, is not to be utilized for truck traffic for this or any development within the Oakview business park. Establishes standards for landscaping, for lighting, for burn height. And just as a final note, I think, as we've done with past conditional use permits, establishes a period of 10 years for the duration of the conditional use, at which time, obviously, the applicant may come back in and apply for an extension of that. So again, we've had a lot of review of this by the planning commission and by the public as part of the both the conditional use and site plan. But this is a public hearing and it would ask, request that anyone has any questions or comments, whether you're in person or within the virtual queue, when your name is called, to please give your name, address, and proceed to address your comments or questions to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. And I will now make the first call in this public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak? Kevin, do we have anybody queued up?
We have the applicant available with his questions. And then we have a neighbor.
If Maggie would like to speak.
Maggie, you should be able to unmute yourself. We'll need your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, we got you, Maggie.
Maggie Menard Miller, 320 West Oakwood Road. We are the property that is like, if you're looking at that drawing, we're like right across from where the parking lot for the trucks would be, where the trucks are coming and going and backing up and doing all their business. We're opposed to this particular kind of development right across the road from us because it's such an intrusion onto our residential neighborhood. We also are opposed to more truck traffic on Oakwood Road, even though it's illegal. We continue to see trucks all day long, starting at 5:30 this morning, coming down our road, lit up like Christmas trees, this one this morning. And we understand it's almost impossible to control it. But still, you're going to create more traffic with this particular kind of development. That being said. That being said, it's in a park where this is permitted. We understand that. We only request that the berm be as high as possible. I see in this drawing, you've added a lot more trees and whatnot on there. We felt that if, at the last hearing, you talked about having a seven-foot berm on the west end, we think you ought to have that seven-foot berm on the north end as well, just to be fair. We know that there's not enough room because, you know, you're kind of squeezing this development into that space. You have over an Amazon in front of, is it English Air along there? That would be ideal, but of course, you don't have enough room there for that. Anyway, and also, I still would like to plead that the sidewalk be extended along West Oakwood Road along there, just to give us some safety. Along with the increased truck traffic, we'll have even more increased car traffic from all the employees coming and going. You're on Oakwood around 2:30 when some of these places get out. It's just crazy, the speeding that goes up and down that road, our road, and you expect us to walk on it as pedestrians and whatnot. So, that's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you, Maggie. You know, I'll address those, or somebody will, at the end of the public hearing before we close out the public hearing. So, this will be the second call. Anybody wishing to speak? Kevin's saying no. No in any audience. Third and final call. And Kevin's indicating no. We will now close the public hearing and move on to consideration of that ordinance. Just very quickly, to answer some of Maggie's questions, Maggie was in attendance of all the Planning Commission meetings, I believe. We talked extensively about the berms and the landscaping, and I think they've done a pretty admirable job of addressing that. The height of the berm was really dictated by where it would hit the ditch, so to speak, on Oakwood Road. So, the higher we go, the wider the berm gets, and it starts to mess with stormwater management, so to speak. Addressing it on the backside, I believe that vegetation's going to be up on the berm. I think this is probably the best landscaped building within the park, if not the city, from the looks of it. The sidewalk, Maggie, I know we talked about that. It's probably not a possible do-it-this-time, but that's always on our radar to improve pedestrian walkways. And again, along Oakwood Road, it's particularly challenging, but as things continue, we'll keep at it. The truck traffic, I can't make any promises because I certainly can't be out there keeping them, keeping the trucks from abusing Oakwood Road the way they do. We are, as Doug said, looking at traffic analysis going forward on this and trying to maybe, in the traffic analysis, redo that intersection at some point in time, help eliminate that. In the meantime, our police are making their best efforts to keep that truck free, and we're always in communication with the businesses as well. So, with that, hopefully, it was satisfactory answers to your questions. I'll now open it up to the council for questions or comments. Greg, anything?
No, I think you covered everything from planning. The only thing that I recall that that road was brought up, coming out of the business park, it sounds like a lot of traffic was turning left there, and right now, currently, there is just a no-left-turn sign, and the discussion kind of led to if there's upgrades in that intersection, to possibly look at engineering the road in such a way where trucks would have to go right, and they wouldn't be able to turn left onto Oakwood, to kind of alleviate some of that.
Yeah, would be helpful. So, and again, we're catching a lot of traffic coming off of 13th heading east as well, and that's part of the problem as well, trying to stop it from the other side. Rich, anything?
Yeah, Mayor Dan Alderman-Dukenyak, 3rd District. Who would be responsible for the costs involved in increasing, you know, the ability to handle more truck traffic? If we're saying currently that we're maxed out based upon the current TIA, what happens with other parcels within that business park that, although they may not be trucking terminals, will still have some vehicles? I mean, so do we, as the city, then, bear the responsibility or the cost of having to make changes that will be able to address...
Andrew, you want to take a?
Yeah, I can.
Increase capacity?
Sure, I can try to address that.
Sure.
Just to be clear, the present, this building puts us right at that max. It exceeds it ever so slightly. And when we were looking at those numbers with engineering and the utility engineer, to be honest, we really didn't see that, although we were at that point, that it was undue, necessarily undue stress or capacity issues on the roadway. What Doug had alluded to earlier was, now moving forward, knowing we've exceeded that expectation or assumption than an original TIA, that it would be the responsibility of an applicant seeking a similar use to come in and either verify what they're proposing is okay, obviously an objective analysis, but verifying what they're projecting is okay from a traffic standpoint, or that certain improvements need to be made. And that could be 100% the applicant, then applicant. That could be a partnership with the city, or the business park could, if the, you know, the use were so attractive, say, or a large manufacturing firm or something that happened to add some to the warehousing logistics threshold, we could take a look at what improvements need to be made and how we eat that apple.
Okay.
So, the answer could be, you know, many different iterations of arriving at how you handle those additional infrastructure costs.
Thank you, Andrew. So, it's just not a given that the city is going to bear all of the expense on this. There are options.
Would have that option or not.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Rich. Ken, anything?
Thanks, Mayor. Just in, you know, reading the minutes in the Planning Commission, you know, significant attention was paid to, paid to the conditions and the impact on the surrounding neighborhoods. I appreciate that. I know the Millers have expressed significant interest. Obviously, this is essentially, you know, their southern view now. Understandable what it is, what it is. The business park is there, you know, and it's just a fact we have to deal with. So, less than the impact, and I had a personal meeting with the Dickmans and had impressed upon them the impact of, or import of, making sure the impact in the neighborhood was minimized with light pollution, noise, hours of operation. Birmingham screening were important. So, I think Sam has been very attentive to the, to those conversations and what the Planning Commission had to say, and I think they've come up with a project that is going to be added to the park, to the city, and I think we can be, I think we can move on here and be confident and comfortable in the fact that we've done the right thing, so.
Great, thank you, Ken. Chris, anything?
No, I would just add that, you know, at Plan Commission, we did talk at length about all of these topics from traffic and the intersection, knowing that this building here would put us right there, but that going forward, it would be something that would be talked about as far as who would bear the burden. Would it be the business owners or who? But, you know, the Dickman Company shouldn't burden the whole thing, so it'd be a shared cost, so. And really, they did, they went above and beyond here with what they're putting in for the trees, the shrubs, and the berms. So, I really applaud for Dickman Company what they added here.
Great, thank you, Chris. Steve, anything?
I don't have anything relative to the development. I was listening to the comments from the resident about the truck traffic, and I know that past developments, the truck traffic issue has always come up, and we've all but tried to promise the residents that we would not let that truck traffic go west on Oakwood. So, I have some thoughts, but I'm not going to take the time here. I'll contact the chief when I return to the state, because it's just something I think we need to address, but I'm okay with the project, though.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Mike?
I'm good, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Then, motion on eight, approving the ordinance for the conditional use permit for the freight yard, terminal, transshipment depot for the property at 10303 South Oakview Parkway.
Thank you, Mayor. Gil will move to approve the, approve ordinance number 2994, approving a conditional use permit for freight yard, freight terminal, transshipment depot facilities for the property at 10303 South Oakview Parkway.
Gisakowski will second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item nine is public hearing to rezone the property at 7140 South 13th from RS3 Single Family to B4 Business with no flood to the, no change to the floodway. Catherine?
Public hearing number two is to consider a request by Teresa Rexa to rezone the property at 7140 South 13th Street from RS3 Single Family Residential to B4 Highway Business, no change to the FW Floodway District. Applicant is Teresa Rexa, property owner Teresa Rexa. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is December 14, 2020.
Thanks once again.
Doug? Again, for the record, my name is Doug Seymour, Director of Community Development. This request to rezone the property at 7140 South 13th Street is consistent with the Conferencing Plan, which calls for this area for commercial development, again, outside of those floodway areas. So, currently, there is a vacant single-family residence on the property, and although this request is related to the zoning of the property, it has been the stated intent of the property owner to turn the existing home into a four-unit office space with some minor modifications to the facade to make it more of a commercial appearance. I guess it's pretty straightforward in the fact that it does implement the Conferencing Plan for the area, and those changes would need to be approved as part of any site or building plan approvals, should the property be rezoned. So, relatively straightforward from a staff's perspective, but with that in mind, this is a public hearing. Would ask that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed rezoning of the property at 7140 South 13th Street, to either approach the microphone if you're in person, or if you're in the virtual queue. Once your name is called, proceed to give your name and address, and proceed to address your comments or questions to the Common Council. This is now...
Great, thank you, Doug. We will make three calls. This will be the first. Anyone out there, Kevin?
A neighbor, David Long.
Please allow him in.
David, you should be able to unmute yourself. We'll need your name and address for the record.
This is David Long, 10110 South Oak Lane. I chose this off the agenda.
Can you do something about the volume there?
This is David Long.
There you go.
This is David Long, 10110 South Oak Lane. I chose this item off the agenda by mistake. I'm here for something else. I apologize.
Oh, okay. Not a problem. Make the second call. Anyone out there, Kevin?
Rep, available with his questions.
Okay. And third and final call. We'll now close the public hearing and move on to item 10, which is approval of the ordinance rezoning the property at 7140 South 13th from RS3 to B4. Questions? Counsel? Greg?
I'll just say, at planning, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion on this item. This lot sits between, I believe, a flag store and the gas station on 13th and Rossen, so it seems fitting. It's more continuity there. Doesn't leave a kind of an excluded residential lot in between some existing businesses. So, if I recall, nobody had any issues at planning on this one.
Anyone else? Steve, how about you? You're the Alderman of the district. Anything from you?
Not really. I think this was inevitable after the flag store was built, and it was kind of like the last piece of residential property there in that area. So, obviously, no concerns from any neighbors because they're all businesses already, so it was just, it was going to happen, and today it's going to happen, that's all.
Okay. Mike, just not to be rude, anything from you?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Then we can move on 10.
I was technically challenged there for a minute.
That's okay.
Kerkowski will make a motion to approve ordinance number 2995, approving a rezone of the property at 7140 South 13th Street from RS3 Single Family Residential to B4 Highway Business.
Merkel second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
And item 11 is another public hearing, and is considering a request submitted by John Schluter, Frontline Commercial Real Estate Development, for an amendment to the existing planned unit development to remove the property at 9141 South 13th Street. Catherine?
Public hearing number three is to consider a request submitted by John Schluter, Frontline Commercial Real Estate, LLC, for an amendment to the existing planned unit development to remove the property at 9141 South 13th Street. Applicant is John Schluter, Frontline Commercial Real Estate, LLC. Property owner is APA 9141 LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is November 14, 2020.
Great, thank you, Catherine. Doug?
Thank you. Once again, Doug Seymour, Director of Community Development. This is actually the first of two public hearings relating to this property. This, the first, is actually just to remove this property from the existing planned unit development. That was most recently amended by the council last year, and it was originally approved in 1979. That was a commercial plan development. It included what then, for, you know, to show my history with the city, was American and Madison. Now, Steinhoffel's included the property of the south, which the Planning Commission and council have since approved for a hotel development, and it also included the properties in the north. This proposal, as you'll find out, as part of the next public hearing agenda item, is for a manufacturing use consistent with the business park land use designation. So, in order for that to proceed, we first have to remove the commercial plan development on this property, and this is what that public hearing does. So, recognizing that this is part one of two, I will note that this, being a public hearing, or request that anyone who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed PUD amendment for 9141 South 13th Street, again, taking that out of the PUD to, once you're recognized, to please address your comments or questions, the Common Council, this public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. We will make three calls. Kevin, anyone out there?
We do have a couple. So, first up is Brittany. She's a neighbor, Brittany. If you could unmute yourself and give your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Brittany Ballasjery. Address is 450 East Trellis Lane. I've been a citizen of Oak Creek for a while, and I've also known John for many years. I think he would be a great owner for this area here in manufacturing. I wouldn't want to see any more retail go in, just because I am concerned about safety. It's already a very highly-traffic area, so I think manufacturing would be a great fit for this area.
Great, thank you, Brittany.
Thank you.
Second call? Anyone else out there? Kevin?
Next up, we have David Long. David, we'll need your name and address for the record.
David Long, 10110 South Oak Lane. This is what I came for. Pretty much, I would agree with the first caller that John would be a great owner of this land and responsible. I know him as well. This land was in my family many generations ago, and it would be nice to see this put to the use of making good jobs, not just retail or restaurant jobs, but good family-supporting jobs in our city. So, thank you for hearing me out.
Great, thank you, David. And third and final call. Anyone else with us, Kevin?
There's nobody else for this item, but the owner is on with his questions.
Okay. Now, close the public hearing and move on to 12, which is consideration of the ordinance to amend and remove that property from the existing PUD. Questions from counsel? Chris, anything from you?
No, other than we talked at great length at Plan Commission about it, and Plan Commissioners weighed, you know, their options. We did discuss with neighbors that were concerned about traffic, and, you know, my thought was that this is really kind of the best of both worlds. worlds from a traffic perspective. It's gonna really minimize the amount of traffic, uh, that the, the neighbors would be impacted, uh, by.
And anything from you and your district?
Danny, just, uh, refresh my memory real quickly. Cause we went through a process late last year on, um, land use and a comp plan change with this property and, and the, and the other properties surrounding it. How did, how did that end up?
You're correct. It actually went through a comp plan change, which was kind of odd. Um, and, and it did sit kind of funny because we did the whole plan and then six to nine months later, uh, we were petitioned for a change. Uh, I myself thought it was kind of strange and then the more I thought about it, whether it was nine months or nine years, uh, the fit and the use was right at the time. Um, and as Chris said, it kind of helped minimize things. Retail really isn't, um, a reality there, I guess, so to speak. I don't know if that's the right word.
I'd agree.
But, uh, so, so in planning, we did make the comp, comp plan changer, after much discussion, actually, about changing a plan that was just reviewed. Uh, but again, I, I don't think this land was on anybody's radar in particular at this point in time. Uh, now, the southern part was already being done, uh, B three there due to the hotel that we had done earlier in the year, but nobody really looked at this property as the same type of use.
And the, um, this is part concept that die or that?
No, the business park concept came in because, uh, it was our understanding from planning and if I miss speaking, feel free to correct me, but it, it, it actually gave us, uh, more control of conditions and restrictions.
That's what the current land use is?
Correct. Am I correcting that, Doug?
Business park, yes.
So, uh, those are the explanations I got for you. So, um, anyone else? Steve, Mike?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Uh, seeing none then, motion twelve.
Kuzakowski makes a motion that the common, uh, council approve the rezone for property to proceed ultimately allowing, whoops, wrong, wrong paragraph.
I'm sorry.
Council adopts, uh, twenty-nine ninety-six and orders to approve the amendment to remove the property at the ninety-one forty-one South thirteenth street from the existing planned unit development.
Sparkle second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
And thirteen is a rezone. Uh, it's a request by John Schluter, uh, Frontline Commercial Real Estate LLC to rezone the property at ninety-one forty-one South thirteenth from B four business to M one manufacturing, same property we spoke of. Uh, Catherine?
Public hearing number four is to consider a request by John Schluter, Frontline Commercial Real Estate LLC to rezone the property at nine-one-four-one South thirteenth street from B four highway business district to M one manufacturing district. Applicant is John Schluter, Frontline Commercial Real Estate LLC. Property owner is APA nine-one-four-one LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty.
Thank you, Catherine. Doug?
Thanks. Last public hearing of the evening. Uh, uh, again, public hearing and a request to rezone the property at ninety-one forty-one South thirteenth street to, from B four highway business to M one manufacturing. In the last public hearing, we talked about how this was part of a previous PUD, commercial planned unit development and the circumstances surrounding the, uh, the, the amendment to the comprehensive plan to allow for a business park designation. The M one zoning is an appropriate zoning to implement the business park. Again, recognizing that any development that takes place in that property will need to come through the Plan Commission with the approval of site, building, landscaping, and lighting plan. So this would seek to implement the changes of the comp plan. Again, now that it's not encumbered by that PUD, this would be the, the appropriate zoning for this. And I show this only as a concept plan. This has not been reviewed by the Plan Commission, has not been approved by, reviewed by the common council, but this just is a concept that is being proposed by, by the applicant to show what might happen at there. Uh, you know, again, we'll take a much deeper dive into this, uh, as part of the site and building plan review, but I think you can see from the building renderings themselves, uh, the intent is to provide a, a building, uh, and a business or businesses that are commensurate with the standards of that business park designation. So with that in mind, I would again ask that anyone who's, who has any questions or comments regarding the proposed rezoning of the property at ninety-one forty-one South thirteenth street to please, once recognized, uh, give your name and address and proceed to address your questions or comments to the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, we will make three calls as usual. Uh, this will be the first. Kevin, anybody?
There's nobody raising the hands for this item.
Uh, second call. Anybody wishing to speak?
Nobody.
And third and final call.
Nobody for that call either.
We'll now close the public hearing and move on to fourteen, which is consideration of the ordinance rezoning the property at ninety-one forty-one South thirteenth. Questions from the council? Comments? Seeing none? Motion?
Kuzakowski makes a motion that the common council accept ordinance two-nine-nine-seven and ordinance to approve a rezone of the property at ninety-one forty-one South thirteenth street from B four highway business to M one manufacturing.
Oracle second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Do business. Uh, item fifteen's informational on the COVID-nineteen update and do we, Darcy, there you are. How are you, Darcy? Nice to see you. We'll turn it over to Darcy. You're muted, Darcy.
Thank you. I'm Darcy DuBois, Health Officer with the City of Oak Creek Health Department. Wanted to provide a brief update on the COVID response activities. Um, so in the City of Oak Creek?
Barb and Dave are not coming.
As of today, we've had, uh, three thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven, seventy-six individuals who've tested positive for COVID. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen just with some, um, graphs, data. Okay, so this first graph is just showing the weekly positive number of individuals who've tested positive. Um, you can see that we, uh, new, new positive cases have continued to decrease since the peak in mid-November, which is, um, really good news. We're currently averaging fourteen, uh, new positive cases per day, which also is a quite a bit lower than our peak in November. And we're also continue to see lower numbers of individuals being tested. It seems to have kind of plateaued around, um, between four hundred and, excuse me, five hundred since decent, uh, early December. Um, our current burden rate is seven hundred and forty-eight. That is based on approximately two hundred and seventy-four individuals who tested positive over the fourteen-day period. And our current percent of positive tests is seventeen-point-two, um, which again, sort of seems to have plateaued over the last couple of weeks or month, months. Um, and we have seen forty-four individuals who have died as a result of COVID here in Oak Creek. Testing updates, the South Shore testing site has remained open into two thousand twenty-one. We were able to work with Milwaukee County and the City of Milwaukee Health Department to obtain continued funding. Right now, the site is scheduled to remain, remain open through the end of March. It continues to be open on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. I had talked previously about a mobile testing unit, uh, that the Milwaukee County was working on. They have decided not to move forward with that mobile testing unit. Um, as we've seen, testing numbers decrease, uh, they decided to reallocate that funding to other COVID response activities, um, likely into vaccine clinics as we move into larger-scale vaccine clinics in the county. We have received updated funding information from the Department of Health Services, so we are expecting approximately six hundred thousand dollars of funding for the Health Department to continue to fund COVID response activities through two thousand twenty-one. That funding will include, um, funding for activities that contact tracing, testing, and vaccine clinic costs. We have, um, maintained all eight of our temporary contact tracing staff continue to work with the Health Department. Some of those staff will be reassigned to work COVID vaccine clinics as we scale up and are holding larger-scale clinics as vaccine becomes available. Um, also wanted to provide an update on vaccine. Um, so as we all know, the information about vaccine is changing very quickly. It seems like every day there's new announcements related to vaccine. So we know, all know that two vaccines have been approved for emergency use by the FDA, the Moderna and the Pfizer vaccines. We do expect two more vaccines to be evaluated for emergency use by the FDA later this month or early next month. Uh, those are vaccines made by Johnson and Johnson and another by AstraZeneca. Uh, in Wisconsin, all vaccinating entities are required by, by the state to allocate vaccines per the, the phased plan. So that is developed by the State Disaster Medical Advisory Committee. So currently, we are approved to vaccinate, uh, phase one A individuals, including healthcare and long-term care facilities, as well as law enforcement. Uh, you likely heard today, there was an announcement that we can begin to vaccinate individuals aged sixty-five and older effective, uh, January twenty-first, or, excuse me, twenty-fifth next week. And we have, uh, received messaging from DHS that we should, uh, continue to prioritize continuing phase one A before we move on to other, uh, groups. So unfortunately, the vaccine supply remains extremely limited at this time, um, and we've been informed that the state has learned from the federal government that they don't expect the vaccine supply to increase, um, for at least the next three to four weeks. So at this time, we don't have the capacity, given our limited vaccine, to begin vaccinating ages sixty-five and older. Um, it will likely take some time for vaccine supply to scale up for us to move through phase one A and then be able to move on to that sixty-five-plus population, uh, which is also quite large. Um, in Oak Creek, there are over five thousand individuals in that sixty-five and older category. Um, we are providing vaccine at the Health Department. So by the end of the week, uh, we will have administered approximately five hundred doses of vaccine in our zone. Um, so as a reminder, we do work with the Cudahay, Saint Francis, and South Milwaukee Health Departments to provide vaccine clinics. So we are holding vaccine clinics at the South Shore Testing Site in Milwaukee on Mondays and Thursdays, and then we are also holding smaller-scale vaccine clinics in our Health Departments on other days of the week. Uh, we hope to finish vaccinating all of the phase one A eligible individuals in our communities in the next couple of weeks. Uh, we're currently surveying them to determine how many are left that still need vaccine. Um, and of course, that timeline will depend on the size of our vaccine allocation. The long-term care facility staff and residents who are also included in phase one A will be vaccinated by CVS and Walgreens pharmacies that has already started with the facilities in our community. Um, the eligible phase one, or the phase one B individuals have, uh, list has not been finalized yet. We expect that final list later this week. Uh, we expect that in addition to older adults, it will include, um, facility staff and residents of congregate settings and other public-facing critical infrastructure staff. Uh, the state has estimated that there will be one-point-two million individuals in phase one B, so that will take some time to move through that phase as well. We know that throughout the vaccination process, um, most of the vaccines will be provided by pharmacies and healthcare systems. Those are larger entities that have the ability to store more vaccine and they have more staff. They also have relationships with many established patients. Um, so we will continue to provide vaccine, but, uh, public health just doesn't have the capacity to hold those, uh, clinics quite as large as the healthcare systems can. We are actively planning to hold larger-scale vaccine clinics, um, and we will be ready to do that once sufficient vaccine becomes available. Uh, we do have previously established large, large-scale clinic plans, um, but a lot of those are not ideal for the type of long-term, large-scale COVID clinics that we need to hold. For example, uh, the, the high school is one of our main clinic sites, but we know that if we need to hold vaccine clinics for months on end, we won't be able to use that space as they transition back into in-person classes. Uh, we're hoping to find, uh, one or two longstanding locations so that we could be in on a regular basis, so that we don't have to set up and take down clinic, uh, every time we hold one. Um, are there any questions I can answer?
Questions for Darcy?
Yeah, this is, uh, this is Steve. Darcy, um, when you say you're looking, you, you may not, or may not have already been suggested to, uh, the community center. You've got the National Guard Armory, Oak Creek Assembly of Gods, a awfully large, uh, facility with, uh, nice drive-through, uh, amenities, so, um, just making those suggestions.
Thank you. We have been in touch with several of those, um, organizations.
You're muted, Mike.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, Darcy, um, how do we, uh, you mentioned the sixty-five and older group is, is on board, uh, shortly. How does that get communicated and, uh, uh, to the sixty-five and older community? Is that through the website or how, uh, how does that handle?
That's a good question. Um, so we are keeping our website up to date, um, as well as our social media, but we know some of those populations don't use the internet as much as, um, other groups. We are receiving lots of phone calls, so we're, we're providing messaging by phone. Um, but we will share information in, in all of those ways. Um, we expect also that the local news media will be sharing information about clinics as they open. Um, so we're really trying to push the information out as much as possible. We're working with the, um, senior living facilities so that they can share information with their residents. Uh, we'll be working with healthcare systems so that they can push information out to their established clients. So, uh, we're really just trying to use a variety of different ways to share that information.
Okay, thank you. Your nice job was very informational. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Greg?
Darcy Alderman Lorick. Um, I know that in the past that you've been tracking and providing a lot of data with the positivity and, um, that type of data. Are you tracking, um, number of vaccines? I know you mentioned five hundred to date. Is that only vaccines the Health Department provided? And if so, are you also getting information from the local pharmacies on how many people they've vaccinated? Um, and I guess how that relates to, um, Oak Creek residents. I, I mean, are you tracking how well the city as a whole is doing vaccinating people? Um, and how close, I guess, we're getting to vaccinating the majority of people? I know it's not happening right now, but are we gonna track to see how close we are to getting everybody vaccinated?
Yep, that's a great question. Um, so the number that I reported, the five hundred, is just, uh, individuals who've been vaccinated by the Health Department. You're correct. We know that many more Oak Creek residents have been vaccinated through their employers or healthcare systems or pharmacies. Um, all vaccines in Wisconsin are tracked through the Wisconsin Immunization Registry, and right now, the state is working on updating the reporting features of that so that we'll be able to easily export data and share the number of Oak Creek residents that are vaccinated. So that is something that we will plan to incorporate into our, um, data updates and our dashboard, once that number becomes more easily available.
Yep.
Most? Hey, Darcy, thank you very much and as, uh, Greg said, good job and Mike said, good job. Very informational, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, item sixteen is consideration of a resolution approving a first amendment to the tax increment district number sixteen financing, development agreement, partial release of development agreement for public improvements, partial release of memorandum of agreement and restrictive covenant, and partial release of stormwater management practices and maintenance agreements in Ryan Business Park, fifth district. Woo, that's a lot, Melissa.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, good luck to the person making the motion on this. Um, this actually is in tandem, number sixteen with seventeen and eighteen, um, for the council's information. So if I might start, just generally, this is literally, as we sometimes say, cleanup. There is a legal description that needs to be updated regarding the various agreements that we have for this item with the developer, uh, Ryan Business Park. So you'll recall that, um, as part of this development, there are, are initial finance development agreements. There's also an infrastructure development agreement. There's a memorandum that's recorded with the restrictive covenant. Um, and then as well, there is a stormwater management practices maintenance agreement, all related to documents between the city and the developer, Ryan Business Park. Because there was a new certified survey map recorded back in July of two thousand twenty for the park overall, that cul-de-sac, which you may have seen on the CSMs that were included in your packet for this item, um, was added to the new Lot Five. Lot Five is the location of Amazon. Amazon leases that property from Commerce ninety-four Project LLC. So succinctly, it is that. We are cleaning up the legal description here so that we are We are cleaning up the legal description here so that we are properly memorializing what we have on record with the developer, Ryan Business Park. That is Number 16. And those are the four agreements as listed that will need to be signed by the city if approved by the council. And then there will be a closing where all of this comes to fruition and is memorialized. So these various amendments and releases are necessary to make that transaction happen.
Great. Any further questions from Melissa? Okay, seeing none, motion on 16.
Dale moves to approve Resolution 12220-011921, approving the First Amendment to the Tax Incremental District Number 16 Finance Development Agreement, Partial Release of Development Agreement for Public Improvements, Partial Release of Memorandum of Agreement and Restrictive Covenant, and Partial Release of Stormwater Management Practices Maintenance Agreement.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Guzakowski?
Aye.
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
And 17 again is, these are all tied together. A resolution approving the First Amendment Tax Increment District Number 16, City Landlord Development Agreement for the First Amendment to the Memorandum of Agreement and Restrictive Covenant, the First Amendment to Stormwater Management Practices Maintenance Agreement, and the First Amendment to Project Arrow Development Agreement. Melissa, you just want to comment shortly on that?
Sure, and I will just shortly. I think you said it best. Those are the four agreements between the city and Commerce 94 Project LLC. Again, this is of the three parties involved in this transaction for the development. This is the landlord. We had a landlord, landlord city development agreement. We have the memorandum and restrictive covenant that's recorded. We have an amendment to the Stormwater Management Practices Maintenance Agreement, and then an amendment to the Infrastructure Development Agreement. So all of these are part and parcel of the reciprocal part of the transaction from Number 16. Property was removed from Ryan Business Park, and this is the property that is being added to the new Lot 5 that is leased by the landlord. Any questions?
Everybody has that. Okay, motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Gale, move to approve Resolution 12221-011921, approving the First Amendment to Tax Incremental District Number 16 City/Landlord Development Agreement, the First Amendment to Memorandum of Agreement and Restrictive Covenant, the First Amendment to Stormwater Management Practices Maintenance Agreement, and the First Amendment to Project Arrow Development Agreement.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
And that gets us to 18, and that's consideration of a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Tax Incremental District Number 16 City Tenant Development Agreement and the First Amendment to the Memorandum of Agreement and Restrictive Covenant, Amazon.com Service, Inc. Melissa?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the final piece. These are amendments to the TID Number 16 City Tenant Development Agreement and the accompanying memorandum of agreement and restrictive covenant that is recorded because of our agreements with the end user, that being the tenant, Amazon.com Services, Inc. We need to, again, just update the legal description. Any questions?
Seeing none, motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Gale moves to approve Resolution 12222-011921, approving the First Amendment to Tax Incremental District Number 16 City/Tenant Development Agreement and the First Amendment to Memorandum of Agreement and Restrictive Covenant.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Kurkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
And item 19 are common council president Aldermanic appointments for some committees for reworking. I'll turn that over to President Gale.
Thank you, Mayor. On the Personal Finance Committee, this is the combination of the formerly two standalone committees. For continuity and simplicity sake, we'll maintain the membership there at Alderman-Dukenyak, Alderman-Tillman, Alderman-Gale. And on the New Board of Public Works and Capital Assets, the combination of the Public Water Utility, DPW, CIP, and Traffic and Safety, I think, essentially is rolled into that committee. As I said, for continuity and simplicity there, for the time being, we will have Alderman-Tillman, Alderman-Gale, and Alderman-Guzakowski serve on that committee.
Okay. Item 20 is consideration of a motion to concur with the mayor's appointments as follows. And this is for the Board of Public Works and Capital Assets. This is the Water Department Board that's blending with Public Works. Just as President Gale said, just for the sake of continuity, we retained three of those commissioners. Robert Sagali, his term would be expiring in April of 2023. Dale Richards, his term would expire in April of 2024. And Fred Seapert would serve as an alternate, expiring four of 2022. Any questions? If none, motion, please.
Great, thank you, Mayor. We're looking forward to moving forward with these new public bodies. And with that, I will move to concur with your appointments as listed.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Lorick?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
And 21 is our Treasurers Report, our monthly Treasurers Report. This is ending November 30th, 2020. We're just a little behind here. Barb, you with us? Oh, you're muted.
Sorry. I didn't get it. Okay, so yeah, we are a little bit behind because there was no meeting beginning of January. I'll be here next meeting as well for December's. So as Mayor said, for the month ending November 30th, 2020, our beginning balance was...
If you need to communicate with them, they will not...
$32,387.76 in 1910. Our ending balance was $35,0523.08. Interest earned was $33,768.81. And beginning to end balance was an increase of $2,626,746.89. Some of the activity for the month. We received our final shared revenue for the year of $4,982,698. We just had a little, small debt service payment of $31,734.31.
Is he month? Any questions for Barb? See, done? Okay. All right, thank you, Barb. Appreciate it.
All right, all right. Good night.
Good night. See you soon. Item 22 is consideration of a resolution. Preliminary resolution declaring an intent to exercise special assessment powers under Section 3.200 of the Municipal Code of the City of Oak Creek for installation of a 12-inch water main in the right-of-way between 890 feet east of South Clement Avenue and Rolling Meadows Court along East Rossin Avenue and to establish a public hearing for the date of February 15th, 2021. Looks like we got Brian Johnston from the Water Department with us. Brian, how are you?
Excellent.
Oh, is it Ted? Is it the water?
Well, the numbers are out of sync here. 24.
I'm on 22.
22 on the council report is listed as the self-propelled crack router, so we're a little off-kilter here.
Oh, mine's listed as utility. Are you following the packet or the agenda? Follow the agenda.
No, he's correct. They are numbered incorrectly, so if we could take 24, then...
Okay, so I go 24, 25, and then 22, 23?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. No, thanks for the crap. Thanks for the crap.
The beat down there.
I don't know. I go straight off the agenda. Okay, scrap 22. We're on 24, Department of Public Works, motion. Consider a motion to approve the purchase of a self-propelled Model 30 router with dust control from Sherwin Industries in the amount of $22,649, Ted. Ted gave up on... I probably said 22, and he probably, yeah, he probably took off and got a drink of water.
There he is. Can't hear Ted, though.
Ted, you're muted.
Give her another try.
He's muted.
Ted, it might have the wrong mic input, so if you hit the up arrow by the mic, you can select one of the other ones.
All right, well, while Ted's getting his sound ready to go, obviously, he's looking to buy this self-propelled Model 30 router with dust control. $22,649. Is anybody recall, was this in capital?
The report thing, it says it was originally anticipated $38,000, so.
So I mean, it was probably an approved cost.
Yeah, it's coming quite a bit under budget, so it's good.
Yeah, and I'm sure it's needed. They don't buy things they don't need down there, so. All for a motion, but everybody's abandoning me here.
Mayor, what does, I don't have the sheets that come along with the agenda, so maybe someone could read off those green sheets as to what 24 and 25 might be in lieu of Ted's appearance.
Yeah, let me try to get some for you of consequence here. All we got is it's a self-propelled dust-control pavement router with a clutch.
1988 model it's replacing.
Oh, is it?
That's what we're replacing.
That's what we're replacing. We're replacing a model from 1988, Steve, so.
I have access, I mean, I have access to it, but I have to scroll through hundreds of pages.
Yeah, yeah, not necessary. It's a needed piece of equipment for pavement.
It was budgeted in CIP.
And it was budgeted in CIP, so, and it's slightly under, so. We're actually in pretty good shape with it.
Right.
So I know those were not great answers for your questions, but it's what we got without the experts here. So, any other questions? If not, motion on 24. I got the number right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Oracle move to approve the recommendation of the Director of Public Works to purchase one Capco self-propelled Model 30 router with dust control from Sherwin Industries in the amount of $22,649.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
You're muted again, Mike.
Muted as well.
Might have lost that.
Tillman?
Okay, aye. Okay.
There we go. Thank you.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Okay, that'll get us to 25, and that's consideration of a motion to purchase one Graco Road Laser from Sherwin, Sherwin-Williams in the amount of $46,031. And we don't have Ted again, so. Again, it was...
This one's in line with the CIP budget.
Yeah, it was in, it was in CIP. $48,000 was allocated. It came in at $46,31. Obviously, it'll replace current roadway striper, which was a 1986 model. So, boy, we get some years out of this equipment, that's for sure. Any other questions regarding this? Okay, seeing none, motion?
I'll move to approve the recommendation of the Director of Public Works to purchase one Graco Road Laser from Sherwin-Williams in the amount of $46,031.
Guzakowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
I will go to 22. Am I correct? All right. 22 is 24 here. But anyhow. 22 is consideration of a resolution for a preliminary resolution declaring the intent to exercise special assessment powers under Section 3.200 of the Municipal Code of the City of Oak Creek for the installation of a 12-inch water main in the right-of-way between 890 feet east of South Clement Avenue and South Rolling Meadows Court along East Rossin Avenue and establish a public hearing for the date of February 15th, 2021. Now we got Brian.
Good evening. All right, this is a directional bore project that we're going to be driven by the utility to connect up two dead-end sections of water main. This is based basically from Gastro's Golf Course east, under the creek, under the railroad tracks to connect up with the water main on Rolling Meadows Drive. Be just on the north side of the property and special assessing the properties along the route.
Questions for Brian concerning that?
Brian, Alderman-Guzakowski, has the property owners been spoken with over this project?
Not yet. I have talked to them concerning the design. They know this is coming, but as far as the actual numbers and estimates, no, I have not talked to the property owners yet.
Brian, is it property owners from Rolling Meadows all the way to the golf course? And is it also property owners on the south side of the road that are affected?
It's actually only going to be affecting three property owners. The south side of the road has its own water main, so it's kind of a dual system in that area, so it's not impacting anybody on the south. Rolling Meadows already has water service, so they are not impacted by this. And there's three properties that are west of the Rolling Meadows Court that already have water service, so they're not impacted by this. So it's just three properties west of there by the railroad tracks that are being impacted.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, motion?
Kurkowski will make a motion to approve Resolution Number 12215-011921, preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers under Section 3.200 of the Municipal Code of the City of Oak Creek for installation of 12-inch water main in the right-of-way between 890 feet east of South Clement Avenue and South Rolling Meadows Court along East Rossin Avenue and to establish a public hearing date of February 15th, 2021.
Oracle, second.
Roll call.
Alderman-Guzakowski?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukenyak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Okay, and then item 23 is consideration of a resolution approving a hold harmless agreement with Ryan Truck Lot LLC in 9441 South 13th Street.
This one's mine as well.
Brian?
This is part of the Ryan Business Park improvements. The road improvements north of Ryan Road on 13th Street impacted the driveway to McDonald's. And with their realignment of their driveway and the truck parking that's to the north of McDonald's, the signage needed to be relocated for their new driveway. When they did that, there are three signs, two of them are their... When they did that, there are three signs, two of them are their, their welcome, thank you signs. Uh, there's a sign for the, uh, truck parking entrance sign and a light base that all ended up in the existing water main that runs along the west side of Thirteenth Street. Uh, this is just a document to protect the utility and city in the future that if there is a water main break, that the city is not liable for the damage to those signs that are in the easement. Um, spoke with the property owner, it, it is a little interesting because of the lease agreements with, uh, the Ryan Truck Park and McDonald's, um, how this all gets worked out, but everybody's in agreement with this, um, and everybody has, uh, seen this and approved it so far.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Questions for Brian? Seeing none, motion?
Zikowski makes a motion to come like council accepts Resolution Number One Two Two One Six Dash Zero One One Nine Two One, a resolution approving a hold harmless agreement with Ryan Truck Lot LLC at ninety-four forty-one South Thirteenth Street.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman Tillman?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
All right, thanks, Brian. Have a good evening. Uh, twenty-six gets us to engineering, and that is a consideration of a resolution approving the state municipal agreement for safe routes to school Phase One transportation alternate programs, better known as TAP. Uh, and we have Mike Simmons with us.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, we, uh, the city found out last fall that, uh, they were successful in their grant, uh, application for the transportation alternative, uh, program. Uh, and this, uh, is a, a grant that, uh, well, the amount applied for and approved is, uh, uh, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, uh, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And how this grant works is that, uh, uh, the city will spend this amount on the design and the construction and the construction inspection, basically everything that, that's associated, uh, with that. And because this is grant money, there's also some state, uh, you know, DOT staff review time of, of the design, uh, to make sure everything that is, is within their, their, uh, specification, so. Uh, but how this works is that the city does need to come up, they need to front that, that amount of money, so that's, that's quite a sum. Um, but then we'll get eighty percent paid back, uh, through that grant, so, uh, the seven ninety-five and change is, is, uh, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, um, uh, a little above that amount from the state grant, and then in the end, the city will spend uh, just under one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, so, uh, you know, getting quite, quite a lot of work done for um, twenty percent of the cost. And so, this, um, is to be, uh, i- in our application, we outlined where this money was to be spent, what, what projects were going to be, um, utilized. And these are all safe routes to school, uh, improvements that were, um, prioritized in the, uh, twenty seventeen report, uh, that was completed by the city. And, uh, basically, it's, it's some improvements, uh, related to, uh, Cedar Hills Elementary School, uh, improvements to Twenty Second Street and, and Sycamore, uh, Drive, uh, Edgewood Elementary, Meadowview Elementary, uh, Shepherd Hills Elementary and West Middle School, and West Middle School is, um, y- you, you probably recall, we talked about that Hawk system. This is to, um, improve that, uh, pedestrian crossing, um, of Thirteenth Street uh, in the, in the vicinity of Pilgrim Way, which is the entrance to Glen Crossing subdivision. Um, but that is a, uh, mechanic, uh, mechanical, uh, basically pedestrian signal, stops traffic, um, and allows the pedestrians to cross safely, so that, that's been a big concern by the school district and, and, uh, you know, the parents of, of the students, uh, attending, so, um. So, what we're asking for then tonight is to have the council, uh, accept and approve and sign the state municipal agreement, which is a requirement, uh, for that grant money to be released. And for us to proceed, um, our schedule is, it's kind of tied to the, to the, to the grant availability or, or the state's, uh, release of that money, so the design would start in twenty twenty-one and that construction would be, uh, in twenty twenty-three and into twenty twenty-four. So.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Questions?
Questions for Mike? Greg?
Hi, Mike, uh, Alderman Lorick. Um, first off, thank you for, for doing this and giving this report. Um, definitely some, some much-needed, um, improvements in the area of the city. Uh, specifically, the, I believe, the proposed speed tables over on Sycamore by Cedar Hills.
Yes.
Um, then the Hawk system on Thirteenth Street. Um, in regards to the, the Hawk system on Thirteenth Street, is that, when that's constructed, um, obviously, I, I don't want to put off anymore, the sooner the better with that, but is that coordinated with the county? Um, and if they ever end up rebuilding that area of Thirteenth Street, what's, I guess, what's normal procedure? Is that something that they would end up tearing out and reinstalling, or do they work around that then?
Right, yeah, no, now, so they, they are already in the process, they are in the early stages of design of that segment of Thirteenth Street. And so we are working closely with them. Um, the, the project still needs to be done, uh, separate from their project, but yet in conjunction with their project, so. It'll be, uh, the city, uh, and the state, because of the grant money, uh, coordinating with the schedule of the county. And, and as of now, they are constructing in twenty twenty-four.
Roger, thank you, and does that include sidewalks? Do you know?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Mike concerning any of the school projects in your districts? They're all very much needed. Uh, Greg brought up two examples that have been going ongoing for years. Okay, uh, seeing none, uh, motion then, twenty-six.
It will move to approve Resolution One Two Two One Seven Dash Zero One One Nine Two One, approving the state municipal agreement for the safe routes to school Phase One Transportation Alternatives Program project.
Zikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
And item twenty-seven is consideration of a resolution appri- approving a minor land division certified survey map uh, by Gonzalo Koutou Lane for the properties at ninety oh five and ninety ten South Eleventh Street.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, the next two items are minor land divisions. We're, we're actually consolidating lots rather than creating lots, which is kind of atypical from what you usually see. This, uh, property at the end of South Eleventh Avenue had previously been divided into two lots, uh, several years ago. Uh, the current owner of the par- of the parcel does not wish to develop a second home on the property and is doing a minor land division to consolidate that back into the one property, and you can kind of see in the CSM where on the property, which, there, there's a lot of wetlands, but you can kind of see on the property where the, the owner is currently developing a single-family home on the parcel. So again, no new lots being created, and in fact, uh, we're losing one lot in this consolidation.
Questions for Doug or anybody from planning? We kind of went over this pretty extensively.
I was just going to mention, Mayor, that, um, at planning, we had talked about this, uh, very extensively. Um, some neighbors are happy, others aren't, and, uh, but the main thing is, is that the, uh, property owner is um, satisfied with, um, what he's doing and what he's going to actually be bringing back, he's going to be, um, actually, uh, what was it that they was going to do with the environment?
They're trying to do some green initiatives on the property, and, uh, it's heavily wetland, and he's going to bring it back to natural state. Uh, and his home is already under construction, the home you see there, um, kind of on the left side of the property, so. Um, all in all, it makes sense. It's, it's really challenging to get another home there. So. Any other questions? Greg, anything? Uh, motion then.
Oracle moves that the council adopt Resolution Number One Two Two One Eight Dash Zero One One Nine Two One, resolution approving a minor land division certified survey map submitted by Gonzalo Koutou Lane for the property is at nine zero zero five and nine zero one zero South Eleventh Avenue.
Zikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
And item twenty-eight is consideration of a resolution approving a certified survey map submitted by David Wynn Blaine Supply Inc. for the properties at five oh one and three fifteen East Rossin. Uh, Doug?
Thanks, uh, this again is also a consolidation of properties. Uh, this is the Farm and Fleet property of Sixth and Rossin, which is, which is the bulk of Lot One, you can see the existing building. There was the parcel kind of in the nor- in the northeast corner of the parking lot, the existing home, which they are acquiring and wish to consolidate into Lot One or the greater, uh, Farm and Fleet parcel. Uh, this is in anticipation of a conditional use permit that is currently under review for the, uh, storage and sale of trailers on that property, uh, and you'll be seeing that in the next couple of weeks as a public hearing is, is scheduled for that. But in essence, the CSM would take two lots, which are there right now, and would consolidate those into one. And at that point, uh, the existing house would be raised, and you should, the council issue the conditional use permit for the, uh, trailer display and sales, that would be the location of that. Any questions or comments from the council?
Thank you, Doug. Um, questions?
I missed, is that going to do it with the seasonal temporary permit we usually give them for the west side of the parking lot?
Yes, it actually will.
That's the thinking, yep.
Yep, exactly, they're going to get a conditional use permit and, uh, be able to display trailers there. Any other questions? Comments? Seeing none, motion?
Kirkowski will make a motion to approve Resolution Number One Two Two One Nine Zero One One Nine Two One, approving a certified survey map submitted by David Wynn Blaine Supply Incorporated for the properties at five zero one and three one five West Rossin Avenue.
Oracle, second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukniak?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
And item twenty-nine is the license committee, I'll turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski. You, can you get to your packet there, Steve?
We, we're all good here, uh.
Okay.
I, yeah, I was able, I was able to read the, the backend of all the, all the paperwork I got earlier today, so, um, I trust everybody's had an opportunity to review the information on the, uh, common council report. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns?
All right, hearing none, Kirkowski will make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one License Committee report.
Dukniak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
And item thirty is, uh, one of two vendor summary reports we're going to speak about, item thirty-one will be the second one. This one is for the week ending December twenty-ninth. Uh, total amount, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-four cents of this. Three hundred sixty-two thousand, six hundred eighty-four oh one will impact the two thousand twenty fiscal year. The remaining amount, the three hundred thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred, thirty-four dollars and ninety-three cents will impact, uh, the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. So if you take a look at, um, December twenty-ninth first, and any questions, feel free to speak up, and the appropriate person will answer.
Alderman Dukniak, third district, item number fifteen on, on the report, uh, big chunk of change, ninety-five thousand dollars for annual support and net motion. I have a big question mark next to that.
Is Police and Fire with us? The Pro Phoenix, I believe, is theirs. Am I correct in that? I, I think that's their communication system.
That's a license renewal, Kevin might be able to answer that, that's his license.
So, yeah, Pro Phoenix is, uh, Police and Fire, the dispatch and record management software.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Any others? Seeing none, motion?
Mr. Mayor, Gail will move to approve the December twenty-nine, two thousand twenty vendor summary report in the total amount of seven hundred thirty thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars, ninety-four cents of this total, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars, one cent will impact the fiscal, two thousand twenty fiscal year, the remaining amount, three hundred sixty-seven thousand, six thirty-four, ninety-three will impact the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year.
Zikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski?
Aye.
Tillman?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
And item thirty-one is also vendor summary report, uh, to, for the week of ending January thirteenth. Uh, the vendor summary report in total is seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, forty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Of this, four hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred forty-eight, sixty-five will impact the year two thousand twenty's fiscal year. The remaining two hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and one dollars and five cents will impact the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. So, please take a look, and again, uh, if you have questions, just let us know, and the appropriate person should be able to ans- hopefully be able to answer it for you.
You know, Mr. Mayor, just to point out on number six, just shows, uh, you know, and people are talking about trash and, uh, recycling and what we pay for, you know, our pickups and, and whatnot, boy. Pointing out.
Also, we'll recall as well that we're in our final year, we did, um, an addendum to the current contract for, I believe, a two-year agreement, and this is we're, we're going to be learning more about the future costs of that this year here. I know Ted's working on that. It'll probably be one of the, uh, early topics for the Board of Public Works and capital assets to, to grapple with.
Thank you. I would, I would like to direct your attention to fifteen, the fourteen thousand, four hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty cents to Traditions Lighting. Uh, that's the remainder of the balance for Light to Square, actually, that event was thirty thousand dollars. But that's reimbursable because, uh, the law, Law Office of Kevin Martin, uh, funded that entire thing, so we had to invoice some, pay upfront and invoice some back. It was very generous of them, and, uh, the lighting display is still out there, so. Will remain out there until they decide to take it down, so, uh.
Mayor Dan, is that the responsibility of?
Of Traditions.
Okay.
To come get it, so. Um, just wanted to point that out, that was actually, uh, a celebration of that, so. No other questions? Uh, motion?
Bill moves to approve the January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one vendor summary report in the total amount of seven hundred fifty-four thousand, forty-nine dollars, seventy cents of this total, set, four hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred forty-eight dollars, sixty-five cents will impact the two thousand twenty fiscal year, the remaining amount, two hundred eighty thousand, five hundred one dollars, five cents will impact the two thousand twenty-one fiscal year.
Zikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
And item thirty-two is a consideration of a motion to convene and to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section nineteen point eight five, to discuss the following: Section nineteen eight five, sub one, sub E, consider the possible infrastructure support for the development of the property at seventy-seven hundred South IKEA Way. B, Section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub G, to discuss Robin Machet Schmidt, uh, Adell versus the City of Oak Creek, Adell, uh, Milwaukee County case, uh, number twenty nineteen, CV zero zero forty-two ninety-five, and Section nineteen point eight five, sub one, some C, to discuss the performance evaluation for the city administrator. President Gail?
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, a movement to convene and to close session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes nineteen point eight five, to discuss the following: A, Section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub E, to consider the possible infrastructure support for development at the property at seventy-seven hundred South IKEA Way. B, Section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub G, to discuss Robin Machet Schmidt Adell versus the City of Oak Creek Adell. And C, Section nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub C, to discuss the performance evaluation for the city administrator.
Zikowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukniak?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Will now convene and to close session and resume at its conclusion.
All right.
All right.
Open and close?
Yeah, no action here, mostly.
Kevin says we're good. Catherine, are you ready?
I'm good.
Gale moves to reconvene and open session.
All right. Thirty-three, want to make motion, Ken?
Well, we got to take a vote on that. Sickening, huh?
Did we get a second?
Guzakowski, seconds.
There we go.
Oh. Reconvene.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Tillman.
Mike bailed.
I think he left. He wants, he's cocktailing.
Yeah.
Kerkowski.
He's been drinking.
No, you guys are on record here. Um, consider action. Any action?
No action, there.
Okay, motion to adjourn then.
Oracle move to adjourn. Guzakowski.
Roll call.
Sorry, Alderman Dukniak.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kerkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Well, thank you. Kevin, thank you. Catherine, thank you very much. I know it was a long night. Melissa, thank you.